December 21st. For the town of Poughkeepsie, please join me for the pledge first.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider the republic which stands one nation under God.
Thanks, everyone. Hope everybody's getting ready for the holidays here in another year. First up, we have Duchess Roots. We've taken here a couple of times already.
Good evening. Good evening. So, just in case everyone didn't know, we were at the town board yesterday and we did receive a conditional site special use permit. So, we're on good track there. We've gone through the comments that you've had. There are really little outstanding things that we could just button up on final plans. I'll do a brief, real quick presentation for everyone, if that's all right?
Sounds good. Share your screen.
Yeah. Everyone can see this, right?
Yes. While you're doing that, I just wanted to make, just mention that we had a slight agenda change that we're gonna add the South Road Crossing architecture changes as a second agenda item, since you're both associated with the South Road Crossings.
Thank you. So, as you're aware, this is building four of a pre-approved site plan that was originally a bank. Building square footage is nearly identical to the same size that was approved, just a rework of some of the parking along the side of it. We've worked a one-way aisle around, very similar to what it was, but did add some parking there. The overall, the loading we removed from the south side of, that was along the neighboring property, because there is no need for a large truck for this type of entity. There's a single loading bay that comes that they will utilize that's on the south side of the building four. As you can see, the previously approved site plan on the left, the proposed site plan on the right, for all intents and purposes, it's almost identical. The lighting is the same, the landscaping is the same, and this was the architecture as we showed it last time. A little later on in presentation, Jason will dive into the architecture a little further during architectural review. But that's really where we are overall. This is giving you just a quick overview of what is there today as it is. The hotel is still under construction, the two buildings top front. And you'll see also on your agenda is, building three is on for architectural review, so that'll help bring this plaza to full completion then.
Yep, that's great. All right, thanks, Ken. Go to Kristen.
Hey, thank you for the overview. The application is on for a public hearing this evening. Seeker review for a type-two action, site plan review and architectural review. From a planning department perspective, there were fairly minimal comments at this point. The application is subject to architectural review, so the board will perform that after we got through the site plan component. As was noted, the town board did grant the applicant their special use permit. So, staff is recommending that the planning board open the public hearing, hear any comments, potentially close the public hearing, adopt seeker for a type-two action, and also grant a resolution to grant a conditional site plan approval, and then you would conduct architectural review. We did also have JMC, our traffic engineering consultant, review the application. I believe their comments are fairly minimal at this point. Mark Pataro's on the line to go through that, and also engineering.
All right, thanks, Kristen. I'll start with Bobby here.
Our comments are pretty minimal, the remaining ones. There's just a couple of questions about the drainage around that ADA parking and where the flush curb is, is it starting and ending?
Yep.
The main, one of the bigger concerns was the walkability of the site and trying to connect this portion of the site with the rest of the site with some crosswalks and access.
So, the site is as it was approved.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So, where the sidewalks are and where the crosswalks are are all as they were approved. If we're looking to add something new, we can talk through that a little bit. There really is no connectability with the sidewalk up front that way because of the spaces the way they are. But we, if we, the board wants us to look at it further, we can pull it up and also talk through that a little more.
Could you put the site plan back up for just a moment, Ken?
Sure.
I think the county had a similar comment.
Yeah, because there is a sidewalk that runs from the hotel basically to the front of, you know, to Route 9, right?
Yes, so let me get to the other. Very interesting, different doing it when you only have one screen. So, yes, there is on the north side here, there's a sidewalk that runs the whole way up front.
Okay, just on that one side?
Correct, just on the one side. The crosswalk is here for the, this section to walk across, and there is a crosswalk that is not shown that is going to be right here as well, right behind the building.
Oh, there is one that's...
There is one that will go right, right here in this area here.
Okay, that'll be good. But then is there, I mean, how about to the, to building two? To get to the building, would there be a way to maybe like go from, you know, across where building three is to, and then cross the entry, you know, so that there would be just a safe?
Here, you mean?
Yeah, basically, yeah.
We could come across here and create, all this is done and installed, though, that's the only thing, is like...
What about?
Well, just a crosswalk.
But we'd have to create ADA, curb ramps and everything like that as well.
Right.
I guess you'd lose parking if you tried to do it somewhere else.
Correct. And as we said, you know, when you look at the comparison, so pardon me for zooming in, the plan on the left was as originally approved, and where we are here, we've created a sidewalk around the north of the building and the south to correct the parking area specifically to the building itself. We could create a back parking walk down on the south side to the crosswalk that goes behind the buildings. But anywhere else, we're really gonna start taking spaces and moving spaces, and we were trying to avoid having to do that in areas that are already constructed and approved, such as...
You have the crosswalk going to the south area there.
Correct, right here.
So, that can...
If we could walk through and make something through here.
Maybe that's, seems like that'd be the only place that might be possible.
Correct.
I mean, okay.
So, you can, I mean, that's, we'll go around the board and discuss that later, see what the rest of the board members think.
I mean, that was about it for engineering.
All right, thanks, Bobby.
Would you like me to stop sharing for now?
You can leave it up, but in case Mark's got some comments on...
Sure.
You there, Mark?
Yeah, so my, my comments are pretty minor, mostly related to signage, and pretty, should be able to be addressed, not a problem. The bigger of the items are basically, which if you want to call it bigger, is that the crosswalk is just shown as five feet, it should be six. That's the notice, the proposed one, just to meet the minimum crosswalk width mentioned in MTCD. But the other ones are really just minor signage-related details that can be handled rather quickly.
Thanks, Mark. This is on for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Move to the second, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Is there anyone in the room here or on the Zoom which to comment on this application?
I don't have the iPad, but if there's anybody in the Zoom that wishes to...
Everybody seems to be staying muted here.
Yeah.
Let me see on Zoom. So, at this point, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Move to the second, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Score on the board for last comments, Peter.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying about the connection with the walkways. I think we should discuss that a little further, though, especially with the hotel in the back. You're gonna have people that are going to wanna walk that area, check out those stores, maybe check out this particular shop, and it needs to be a little bit more walkable than it currently is, so if we can look at that. I also wanted to mention something I mentioned in another meeting. I don't live too far from here, and my car was broken into. So, and I know that there was a couple of gas stations not too far from this site that were also broken in, that were also robbed. So, I, I know that you had some security cameras inside and maybe, maybe one outside, but you might wanna just look a little bit closer at your security for this particular site.
Can I address that?
Sure.
Yeah, so we are working with a security consultant who has, who does this for a living on a national level. He happens to be a friend of mine, and we will have many cameras outside.
Okay, good.
And we'll have many cameras inside. Every door in the facility, exterior and interior, will be access controlled. Every entry or exit to this property will have a mantrap-style setup, so it's a double-door system in and out of the facility. So, there would be no way for anybody to come directly into this facility and get into the public retail area or even into the back. There'll be steel doors, there'll be a vault, there'll be at least one alarm, perhaps two. We haven't made that decision yet, but the, and the cameras will be state-of-the-art, likely a lot better than what a normal retail operation would consider.
That's good, yeah, that's good. Would that be 24-hour surveillance?
Yeah, so we'll have, it'll be a DVR system associated with it, and I believe it'll be at least a week worth of DVR, and that DVR will be secured inside of a secure area of the facility. We do have a local bank that we are working with, so many people have a misconception about that there's no way to put your cash into a bank. That's not the case these days, so we will keep limited cash on property, and we will be able to take debit cards and have an ATM on promise, likely.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Anything, Ron?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
I, no, no comments, no questions.
What, what do people feel about the crosswalk issue?
For me, given how similar the two applications are, you know, this one from the previously approved, I'm fine with the current layout as proposed.
Yeah, I can't see if we, if we previously approved this, why wouldn't we approve it now?
Well, it's an amended site plan, so it's an opportunity to do that.
It's a different business going in there.
Right, there isn't a drive-through, for example, with this business, the bank would have had a drive-through, so, you know, it is a little bit of a different kind of a business. That's the only reason why I think, you know, some attention to that.
I would echo your comment that it's, it's good to look for opportunities that...
And I agree entirely with, you know, working on as, whoops, let me just switch over to this one, it's just easier, sorry, to find a connectability to the back to this crosswalk here for a hotel guest or someone walking up front. I really would prefer, unless the board are really adamant about it, not to mess with the curbs on the drive aisles and the roads, it's all been done.
If you're already putting that other crosswalk in there, you said...
This one is, and the curbs are poured for that already as part of it.
Okay, so that's there, then the hotel guests can come in that way.
Correct, the hotel can get to here, and then we, I'm even wondering if what we do is we play with this shift here of spaces and create a space between so that they can walk through here.
Crosswalk through.
That would make a lot more sense than going to the back of the building.
Correct, right, yeah. Right, so they can come right in and go right through here.
Yeah, that'd be like, yeah, I like that.
Just shift the space down.
Just brainstorm it.
Yeah, play a little, play with that a little bit. Play a little bit with that cannon.
Yeah, I will, okay.
Then we can have staff review that.
Okay, that'd be great.
All right. Guess, let me check my comments, if I had anything else, that was mainly it. Did everything up front, so...
I move the planning board hereby determine that the Duchess Roots is a type-two action per Part 617.5C9, requiring no further environmental review.
Second.
Move to the second, for seeker, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for Duchess Roots subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of and not limited to the following one through six.
Seven, do we want to add seven to look at the crosswalk?
We can, but that would include the planning board comments.
True, true, true.
Second.
Move to the second, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes five to one.
All right, thank you, everyone. We're ready to, Jason, Jason will come up for that.
Good evening, Jason Litchak from JL Architecture. So, we put a lot of thought and consideration into the design of his building, and we took, we looked at the two buildings in front of us as the entry points for the plaza, and we kept the building within the same contextual use and the look. We kept the same materials using the metal siding that is found on Smoothie King, composite siding that is found on both buildings, and we're using a composite wood, and we also have the stone veneer in the front of the building and around the building that also matches the character of the buildings within this plaza. We're providing, the colors that are being provided here represent Duchess Roots colors. The dark blue is their main color of their logo, and the greens also are found within their color palette of their website, so we kinda kept that color palette to relate to Duchess Roots. The height of the building matches the front buildings at 22 feet. The top of the parapet wall is about 13 feet, I'm sorry, 15 feet. So, we will have a three-foot parapet around the perimeter of the building, so any mechanical equipment on the roof will not be seen. And that's really, that's it. We're providing one main entrance in the front, as Scott had mentioned, for security purposes. They will enter the building, do their purchasing, and there's an exit on the side. All deliveries happen in the back of the building, we have a private loading zone, and that will be treated during the construction so that it will be more of an impenetrable surface, so people can't drive their car through the building. We're looking at ways to make this even more secure.
We don't need another junior's lounge episode. All right, and it's angled up there like the previous, the front two buildings, it's, so looks good to me. Any comments from the board members? Good, looks good.
Looks good.
All right, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Move to the second, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, thanks, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I said, we're gonna move up another architectural review in the same plaza to get that out of the way. South Road Crossing is building three, the last building in this development.
Good evening, everyone. Jay Deason with Mori Architects and Kevin Langen from Cameron Group. So, we, yeah, we're working on building three at South Road Crossing, and since we were just discussing number four, it should be a pretty easy segue. Building number three is directly across from building number four or behind building number one, it's a 6,200 square, 6,400 square foot building. We're not proposing any changes to the overall site plan so that this isn't a site modification. No change to the originally approved footprint of the building, it's really just an architectural review tonight. So, I'm gonna share my screen, and we can go through that.
Do you have any comments yet on what businesses would be going in there?
Kevin, if you can...
Sure. We have a sign leased with Crumble, which is a cookie tenant. I don't know if anyone's familiar with it, it's a national franchise, the cookies are fantastic. They are about this big each, they're about four servings per...
That's what I need.
Per cookie. The menu changes every Monday, so there are actually people who open up their social media, find out what the cookies are on Monday, and show up every Monday to buy them. They're gonna be around 1,500, 1,600 square feet on that end cap closest to the Smoothie King building. We're working and hope to have a lease to announce closest to the hotel on that end cap soon as well, and a few others looking.
All right, thanks for the update. All right, go ahead with the architecture.
So, similar to what Jason was describing on, on building four, this building's gonna utilize similar materials and matching colors to what was approved for, what was constructed on the front two buildings. So, we have a mixture of hardy plank siding, some hardy plank flat panel material with the same cultured stone that is used on the other buildings, we're gonna utilize here. We have some, we did an accent area of some vertical natural wood on the southeast corner, and then also a suspended decorative suspended cable canopy on the southwest corner. Same red storefront frames for the doors and window areas. The south facade is what faces that main driveway, and that's set up for the four tenants, potential four tenants that Kevin was describing. You know, each one we showed with a sign area, but until those tenants are finalized, we don't know what the signs will be, but they would come back in for those approvals. Also, to have some 3D renderings, you can take a look at, gives you a little bit better representation of the facade. And then I know there was a comment based, or about the HVAC units on the roof, so we took this and we superimposed those units. So, in this next visual, you can see the gray squares, those are four-foot-high rooftop units, and you can see from, from most angles, they're gonna be obscured from view, so...
Behind the parapet.
Yeah, behind the parapet wall there, yeah. And you also have the, kind of the bump-ups in, you know, the two front corners that, you know, they're even higher than that parapet wall, so it gives a little bit more screening, which is nice. I did bring color material samples, if you wanna take a look at those, but again, they're the same, or similar, very similar. Very similar to the other buildings in the front.
Sometimes the printouts don't show it exactly.
They never do, honestly. So, that's a summary of building three, and certainly we will look forward to any questions we have.
All right. All right, I noticed there's, you know, no windows then on the, on the side facing the Smoothie King or the hotel.
There's, each elevation has one set of windows. The way the Crumble, the way the Crumble is set up, you can't add windows because of their store, so he actually requested that size window, or he wind up putting some sort of film or dark out on it anyway.
I guess you have the, is that an actual door facing north or south, or the door is only on the...
The glass returns around the corner, chairman, it goes about eight or 10 feet. So, it does some storefront in the front, and then typically in your back of house, store areas, you know, wouldn't have so much storefront glass.
Okay, and I see with the red color, it looks like, it's like a nice palette.
Thank you.
I think we had the same question come up with the proposed church on Chief Road where they had an entire length of wall with no fenestration whatsoever.
Yeah.
And we don't really permit that, so you're gonna have to come up with some, an idea, some design to address that.
I didn't catch the question.
The north elevation has, offers no windows.
It has the wraparound.
It has a window in the...
But north is, that's foam and wash side, that one doesn't have.
Oh, the rear, the back?
Yeah. I mean, it really...
You're gonna have to provide something, some design feature, you can't just have a blank wall.
It's the back of the building facing the car wash.
I understand, I understand. But I think it's actually written into our code somewhere.
Well, and traditionally, we'd have someone install like the, like a faux window.
You, you're an architect, come up with an idea.
Yeah, we could come up, maybe we can just do some, you know, a different panel of material there as opposed to a window.
Yeah, I feel, for example, the one I remember, they did a faux window at the Walgreens down by, it was at Bath Beyond by Olive Garden there. They had to put several faux windows in, I think.
But you're gonna have to present some type of design feature, you cannot just present a blank wall.
Okay, I guess we can take a look at that, but, I mean, again, I could, we could just do some material differences there, build some false penetrations.
Yeah, we can make it a condition of approval, and we'll, the staff, I'm sure, will be competent enough to look at it.
Yep, that was my next comment.
So, the idea is the wall need to be accented, or is the window...
The code says no windowless, no windowless facades.
Okay, that's what's our quote?
I believe, yeah, and typically we'll have like a faux window treatment or something to break up the...
Just breaking up the...
Yeah.
You mean, just the back of a building, Kristen, is that's, it's all sides?
I mean, it doesn't specify one, one side or the other, but, you know, traditionally, we can like, you know, we can definitely do this as a conditional, you could present maybe an idea or two. Staff would take a look at it, and then we would run it by the chairman if that's, if the board's comfortable with that, so that you don't have to come back to another full board review.
Well, the other thing, too, is that this particular building doesn't coincide with the other three, the two in the front, and now the third. The building is flat, the top is flat.
Yeah, we, we...
Not angling it.
We thought about that, and, you know, we tried to do, you know, a lot with different materials and vertical elements to try to give it some interest, and I think there's enough going on that I think it's a good-looking and interesting building without that.
It is, that's what I'm saying.
And it's setback behind building number one.
I'm saying in this particular area, you have the two buildings in the front that are angled, and then now you have this third that was just approved, that also has an angle on the roof. Unfortunately, I think you have to do one here as well, otherwise it's not really gonna look that great.
But this building has a lot less visibility than all the other buildings.
I mean, it's behind, it's just, it's in line with Smoothie King there, but, I mean, no more, no less visibility than Duchess Roots, though.
It actually does, if you're driving Route 9, pulling into the center, you see Duchess Roots, you don't see this building.
Could just that front part be angled a little up?
I mean, certainly could be done, I know Kevin was interested in trying to keep this building a little bit more economical than the others, because it, everything, you know, you guys know everything has been so expensive lately, so we were trying to just, and from an economical standpoint, make it very interesting, but try to trim where we're good.
What's everybody else's feeling on the slant?
I, well, you've got more tenants in this building than the other buildings, so I feel like the slant, kind of like the, the, one we just had before, it was a single tenant, so like the slant was cohesive for that single tenant, and I know for the buildings in the front, it, I feel, I, my opinion for four tenants, something a little different might call out that there's multiple tenants in it. That's a thought that, that I have. I, I think it's okay if it looks like this, I don't, I don't think it has to mirror the parcel across from it. I understand, like, I totally get your point for cohesiveness, but I'm okay with it, and given the four tenants, I think a little more variety in the layout might be, you know, suitable.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple of questions. Will all of the deliveries be in the back?
Yes, I was expecting would, yes.
Okay, so I noticed that there's five doors in the back, and there's four storefronts. Is one of them like a maintenance?
It's a mechanical room.
Yeah.
To service the building, yeah. There'll be roughly nine-by-nine mechanical room in that corner.
Okay, are there, are there any HVACs on the roof, are they gonna be heated? I mean, I, I mean, any?
Yes, yeah, and I had a visual of that, I can pull that back up. But if, in this rendering here, if you see those darker shaded squares in the roof, so that shows those four foot, roughly four-foot-high units, and that they would be obscured for most vantage points.
And will the deliveries, will the trucks be able to back up in there? I don't see a lot of room there, except maybe parallel parking.
We're not, we're not doing the site plan? Right. We've already done the site plan, building hasn't changed, so I think, yeah, so I think we need to focus on the architecture.
Well, okay.
Yeah, that's all we want. I guess the only question is slant and windows, if you will. So, I could see the point of not putting the slant in myself, I guess.
I think from my perspective, like John said, I mean, I'm okay with it as is, but if you wanna give... as is, but if you wanna give character to the different tenants, then maybe something can be done there. Like we're saying about the backside being one wall blank, accentuation might give it some.
And how long is that back wall? How long is the building?
Yeah, it's, it's about, roughly about a hundred feet.
Okay, that's not huge.
We have a prohibition against warehouse walls with this type of view, so just come up with some design feature.
Understood, yep, we will take a shot at that.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's it then, are you okay with the, without slanting it?
Yeah.
Okay, so just confirming that the board is okay without the, the pitch roof or slant, as we're calling it, um, and then we're also, but we are looking for a couple of examples of, to, to break up the one, the facade. Uh, I believe that's, is that the north side, or?
Yes.
I'm very, directionally challenged, is great as a planner, um, um, so that, um, and, yes, north, and that's the only other condition then, we're, we're letting go of the roof.
Yeah, it's not the only one that seems to fit, that should be.
I think we're leaning toward not leaning it.
Uh, and then I just, because I didn't get to do my little spiel here, um, it is on for architectural review, um, again, it was a part of an at-large development plan, uh, the site cha, I was assured that the site plan, as was previously approved, is not changing. This is the application for architecture, um, we have the condition to add on tonight's potential conditional approval. I also wanna just note that this did get circulated to the county, just for the matter of the record, it did go to the county planning department, um, and it was a matter of local concern, so there were no additional comments. Uh, you've already confirmed that all the rooftop mechanicals would be screened, so staff would be recommending, um, that the board conduct architectural review, which was already heavily underway, uh, but we could also, I think I actually, we can modify the resolution to say conditional, except uh, architecture as presented, um, or, you know, grant conditional architectural approval, if, you know, however you wanna phrase it, but um, something along those lines, just so we know that those conditions have to be met.
Yeah, you have conditions listed already on the, on the.
Perfect.
Resolution, so we could just add that, add that condition, add six that we examined.
Yeah, I can add it as like bullet, or A under five, yep.
Okay, five A. Examine the, uh, windowless facade in back. All right, go ahead.
I move the planning board accept architecture as presented, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and cleanness exclusive of, but not limited to the following, one through five A. Do something about the windowless facade.
Second, move to the second, to create additional, call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, you can go.
Thank you, have a great holiday, everybody.
Happy holidays.
You too. All right, Eastdale, calm down. Thanks Jeff for letting us, letting us swap the order there, we were in the same Plaza.
Never a problem, thank you. Um, if I could share my screen?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, Jeff Kane, um, representing Kurtoff Companies and Eastdale Village. Uh, we're here tonight for our twenty-fifth amended site plan and a special permit approval for um, lot G, uh, in the, in the corner of the, of the, of the west side. Um, it's a twenty-fifth amendment, and I just wanted to, to kinda just remark on it as I counted him up, it'll, this would be the forty-first business proposed for approval, and, and, and that type of economic activity, um, has been, we think, great, and, and again, it's just a, it's just a thank you to this board for working with us through this process, we think it's been, it's been a, a great experience for us, for tenants and various owners on the site there, so, so again, thank you. But here's an overview of the, again, of, of the site. Um, this is the, the west side, again, the blue is the residential, um, green areas are the, the, the commercial buildings that are operational, um, we have one building under construction here, the E-one building, and we're here tonight in the corner for the, for the proposed daycare on, on, on lot G. You know, and this was, uh, this was Eastdale Avenue, it was always the, the main street, um, and this corner was always kind of this other commercial corner, um, proposed, you will remember even at the beginning, we had a daycare proposed there since the beginning of the project, but we had a drive-through bank here, and this was, this was kind of a different corner than the, than the rest of the, um, the rest of the site, so, um, we've tried to, you know, pull that back into many of the, many of the design characteristics for the rest of the site there, um, but it had, it's always had a little different, a little different kind of structure. Um, and again, just for, for completion, this is the, again, the other side of the, the other side of the forty-four, again, the, the commercial main street, uh, and the residential, residential behind. Um, so, this, this amendment brings the first national tenant to Eastdale. They've all, for the most part, been, or have all been, been local, uh, local businesses. Um, I guess maybe the only exception there is, is Quest, they have a lab operating in one of the, uh, one of the buildings, but, 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 but in terms of having a, a major storefront, um, uh, this tenant is the, is the first national tenant, and we've had to work with them a lot to align their requirements with, with our, with our design context. Um, the actual tenant there is Learning Experience, they provide daycare and early education for the ages really of infants, like six weeks through preschool, and they have about four hundred locations and, and are growing across the, across the country. So, it's a, what we'd call a purpose-built building, this is a building built for daycare, this isn't a retrofit, this isn't something else that's being used as a, as daycare, this is a daycare building. Uh, they, they make a point about, you know, no sharp edges, um, they have, have this incredible security control there, you really are, you have to fob in and, uh, and be, and be, and be let out, so it's very, very secure, very, very focused on, on daycare. Um, typically, the drop-off takes about seven minutes, um, rarely have more than, than eight cars at a time. What happens is you're, you pull up, you park, your caregiver gets out of the car with the, with the child, you walk into the, walk into the, the building, there's a kiosk there, you log in, actually, you fob, you fob in, then go to the kiosk, log in, it tells you where you're taking your child, drop the child off in that room, and then, and then you go. Um, no lines, there's no greeters, I remember, um, you know, summer camp at, at the IBM, talking about, you know, have these old long lines of greeters picking up kids at the end of the day, you know, none, none of that, none of that going on here, this is very, um, uh, very structured, both pickup and, and drop-off, and, and as a result, um, there aren't the, the types of, of, of typical waits or lines that, that have historically have been part of, of daycare. Um, and then food is the other real issue there, um, they do feed the kids, um, but there's no, uh, they don't, they don't cook anything on-site. It's catered, they reheat through either microwaves or, or rice cookers, the, for, for, they boil the, reheat, read the bags there, so that's the only type of food prep that really goes, goes on.
So, we don't need a grease trap there.
So, we, no grease trap, 'cause there's no grease, there's no cooking, um, and that's, that's exactly right, and that's, uh, and, and, you know, and I, I shared the architectural footprints, architectural plans with, with both the health department and, and the sewer department, town engineer, I mean, there's, there's just no equipment, there's no hood, there's no stove, there's no, uh, there's no, there's no electric, we couldn't sneak one in later, there's no gas line there, you can't, right, there's, there's no cooking on, on-site there, and so it really is a different, you know, different type of, 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 of process. Um, and then the other issue was, you know, designing the site access within Eastdale to reduce traffic through the residential portions of the site, um, to make sure we don't have traffic backing up onto, onto Route forty-four, and keep the parking lot really free-flowing and safe for, safe for the kids. You know, one of the things I, and I can talk about the site plan in, in a second, but one of the things they really wanna make sure is, is there are bollards, for instance, everywhere where there's a parking area around where the, the play area is, they don't want by mistake, somebody, you know, hitting the gas instead of the brake and going into the, into the playground, that's, that's the type of concern that they have here, so you'll see a lot of bollards on this, on this plan in some areas. Um, but this is the, uh, this is the overall site again, and, and how you would access um, this building is if you are, you know, Pleasant Valley bound on, on forty-four, you'd probably wanna make a right on Eastdale Avenue, uh, come down Founder's Way, and then enter the, enter the site here. Um, this is Elizabeth Lane, which runs between the Ambulatory Surgery Center and, and Learning Experience, but you can't make a left in here, can't make a left in, can't make a left out, this is a right-in, right-out access only, so you're gonna come in here, or you could come in on, to, make a left onto Concord Village Drive, and come around and enter the, into the, the site from, from, again, from, from Founder's Way. And if you're coming from Pleasant Valley towards, towards Mccipsy, you could ease, most easily make a, make a right in. Um, at one point, this access into the site was two-way, so you could make a right in, and then right into the parking lot. Our concern was that this would have the potential for backing traffic out, there's a problem here, traffic backs in out onto forty-four, which we wanted to, wanted to avoid, so we did push the entrance to the, to the rear of the site to keep that, keep that from happening.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and then, and we also really focused on how this operates in relationship to traffic from the, from the ASC, and, uh, one of the things about the Surgery Center is, um, most people are, are picked up at the, at the door when they leave, um, uh, don't drive themselves home, some people will walk to their, will walk to their car, but they're exiting, they're exiting here, but they're not exiting in the morning, you're there, you're there for a while, so the exits here don't coincide with the, with the majority of the exits, certainly in the, in the, in the morning here, and, and likely not in the evening either. Uh, for the daycare, it's a little more concentrated in the morning drop-off, typically between six-thirty and nine-thirty, um, whereas the, the pickups really run from, you know, twelve-thirty to six-thirty, so it gets more spread out on the, on the pickup side from the daycare, the morning's a little, a little more condensed, but those peaks really don't coincide at all with the peaks for the, for the, for the, for the ASC, so again, we, we took that into account as we were, we were aligning the, the access points. Um, so again, the, just kind of a blow-up of the, of the, of the site plan here, again, we wanted to keep this as, as a one-way, people can go left or right coming out of this access point, um, uh, but the, the entrance really would be off of Founder's Way in the rear. Um, the entrance is, is in the center, they don't have, uh, there's no, there's no drop-off, 'cause you can't just, you know, roll to a stop and kick your kid out, you gotta get out and, and walk them in, so they have, have the, have parking there, um, uh, and uh.
Okay, so there's no line there, people would be.
There's no line, right, right.
Idling.
Right, 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 there's no, right, there's no, there's no, yeah, no pull-over lane and get out, no, you gotta, you gotta really park and, and, and walk in, and that's, again, kind of their, how their operations work.
Good.
And then, we wanted to make sure we, we pay a lot of attention to the landscaping around the site, so along the Route forty-four side, again, we have a, kind of a combination of, of, of trees, shrubs, um, and, and planting beds across the front, and then some, again, some trees on the, what do you call it, the backside, the, the north side, the, the, the side that's more towards the, the storm basin and, and the Pleasantville side of the, side of the site, in continuing the street trees as we've done throughout the, throughout the site. And then, the playground area, it's about five thousand, slightly under five thousand square feet, but it is a, um, has an underlayment, a foam underlayment, and then a, a turf on, on top. It's different than the turf that we used elsewhere on Eastdale, because our turf has kind of an infill of sand, and this is just a turf with that, with that, with that soft fall underlayment throughout the, throughout the entire five thousand feet, and they have their equipment separated into little younger kids, little older kids' sides of the, uh, of the, of the play area.
Is there fences around that?
And this is fence, yeah, six-foot, six-foot final fence around here, and there's all these doors, these areas are, are doors around here, so, other than the front of the building, there's a four-foot fence around the sidewalk, all the way around the back, so a kid comes out of any of these doors, any of these classrooms, into the sidewalk, really the only place you can go, there's a, there's a gate here which is controlled, and a gate into the playground area, so this, this is fenced, and if you're getting in the playground, then there's the, there's a six-foot fence, um, around, around this, so, so the access is, again, really controlled for, for safety, kids, uh, to get.
Good, I didn't want to get into the stormwater pond.
Yeah, no, that's, uh, yeah, right, uh, you know, you get, you get, get, you know, a four-year-old who wants to climb the fence and jump into it maybe, but I mean, they really gotta work at it to get, to get in there. So, and that's, again, our, our, our presentation.
All right, thank you, Jeff, and we'll do architecture later. Eric?
Sure. Uh, it's an application for Seeker amended site plan, special use permit, because this daycare center does require a special use permit, unlike some of the other uses at, um, Eastdale Village, and architectural review. Uh, the, it's pretty straightforward, we welcome the revised layout, uh, the only potential issue we recommended the planning board consider was the arrangement of the one-way exit to Elizabeth Lane, uh, it is within about fifty feet of Duchess Turnpike, uh, in the past, in other, other situations, we've seen access preferably located a little further from the highway, so we thought that the board might want to get a traffic engineer review of the exit and, and make a recommendation regarding its preferred location, for example, opposite the exit from the ambulatory surgical center, another twenty, another forty, fifty feet, uh, down Elizabeth Lane, uh, might reduce conflicts of conflicting turning movements, uh, but that would be, that could be handled as a condition of approval, if the, but the board should talk about it and consider how it would, you know, if it wants to.
That would kind of split the, the parking there a little bit then.
Yeah, um, that was really our only substantive, uh, comment, um, there's like some other minor, uh, technical things to clean up in conditions of approval, and we have a resolution uh, for a condition of approval.
All right, thanks, Eric, let me go value.
Yeah, um, a couple concerns revolve around the location of the shed, the S-two shed, um, it's, it's encroaching on the pump station, which is in an easement for the sewer, um, as well as there's a snow storage area there that would in turn be for that driveway to that pump station, so figuring out how that's gonna impact that, and then the lateral, the sewer lateral for that shed is shown, uh, crossing out of the shed and into the pump station area, right up against the generator, and into the wet well. We'd prefer to have that tie into the, the trunk line somewhere, as opposed to directly into the wet well. Um, it just seems a little cluttered there.
We, we eliminated it.
Okay, well then, thanks for letting me ramble.
Yeah, right, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue with your comments, 'cause they're right, they're not, they're not wrong.
Okay, there you go, thank you. Um, well then, that's easy enough, um, couple other things quickly, uh, the ADA parking seems like it's a little distant, um, not sure if there was a, a reason for it.
There is, um, you see all these doors across the front here? Um, you can't have, uh, you can't have your ramps and loading, and loading zones in, in front of the doors, and so the, the number of doors really pushed the handicap parking away from the, away from the building, and that's, that's why it ended up, it ended up, it ended up here. Um, we can, you know, scoot it up, you know, a little bit, but, but it's, but it's, it's really, um, it's, but it was really a challenge with the number of doors that they had across there.
What's the purpose of all the doors?
Um, internally, those are just doors exiting, I, individual classrooms, or, you know, I don't know why they have the doors from the, from the rooms, but that's, uh, that's, that's driven by their program.
Emergency exits or something?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, I'm guessing.
Um, there's also, uh, there's a couple light poles, it looks like, shown in the sidewalk?
Right.
Is that, that accurate?
Yeah, and we've, we've managed to, to, uh, do that in, in other places, we keep at least four feet between the, the back of the, the cylinder for the, for the, for the light pole and the front of the building, so there's adequate ADA clearance there, so.
Okay, um, uh, there was one comment about the hydri, the location of the hydrodynamic separator, a little concerned with access for maintenance, but I'm not sure if that can be shifted to, to make it a little easier to get to.
Yeah, that's him. We keep at least four feet between the back of the cylinder for the light pole and the front of the building, so there's adequate ADA clearance there.
Okay. There was one comment about the location of the hydrodynamic separator. A little concerned with access for maintenance, but I'm not sure if that can be shifted to make it a little easier to get to.
Yeah, that's him. But what we can, that was installed as part of prior.
Oh, oh, oh.
But we can show up an access path really from the front parking lot. I mean, it's through some lawn restoration to get to it, but I think that's probably the easiest way to get to it, to clean it out.
Okay. That's about it.
Is the, just offhand, is that shed associated with the daycare?
It's not. That's an Eastdale shed, and so it has moved a couple of times. And again, its program changed. We decided to eliminate the water and sewer and told everyone except for inside engineering, so it ended up on the plans. But that was my error. So it was on the plans, but wasn't intended to be there.
It is where it is, then.
Yeah. So, but I also will say that we did provide, moved the snow gates to the other side of the dumpsters. There is an access way to actually continue to plow snow and use the snow storage area. So it would work differently than what it is now.
Okay.
Would still work. So that shed, it's been reviewed, has architectural review on it, so it's just a different, slightly different location for where it is.
All right. It's time for a public hearing, so I move we open the site plan and special use permit public hearing.
Second.
Move to the second. Call to question. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6 to 0. Anyone in the room or on the Zoom that wish to comment on this application for the daycare? Seeing none, I move we close the site plan and special use permit public hearing.
Second.
Move to the second. Call to question. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6 to 0. Start with, go around the board. Start with Nicole.
So I noticed that there were some comments about the compatibility of the sign for the It does seem a little bit larger than some of the other ones, as well as it's going to be lit, right? At night as well?
So, a couple of things about the sign. I know we presented some preliminary elevations, which we then supplemented as we continued to work with the architect and the tenant there. The size of the signs will continue to be in conformance with the code. We're not asking for any variances there. And the lighting style, it would be, again, internally lit as we have done elsewhere, including the Surgery Center across Elizabeth Lane there. You know, the one element there that is really different on this sign is the elephant. And that is their identifying logo, and I think it makes the sign look different, but it's the one accommodation that we're asking that the board recognize that that's what we.
That's their logo.
Yeah, right. We need further logos, their identifier. So they had more of those. They had elephants and blocks on the canopy columns out front there, and we managed to get rid of those, but they wanted to keep the elephant on the building signage. So we're working with them to compromise through that.
Okay. There's a fire connection. You talked to the fire department about moving that, or?
I haven't yet. We've been looking at ways to accommodate it. Really, if I could share the screen again for a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the fire department connection is right here on the backside of the building. And I believe what fire department's asking for is to move it here on the corner on the front. And, I'm sorry, it's on the front, and they wanted to move it to the rear. The problem with it on the rear is this playground area, for safety reasons.
It's all fenced.
They need no utilities within that area. Kids do crazy things with pieces of equipment there, and so that comes outside the fence. And I think, and I'll, we'll talk to the fire department, but having it here versus here, I don't believe is a significant change. And I'm not a firefighter, but we'll talk through that. As long as we can find some way to get a little fire access, maybe a five-foot striped path here so they have clean, unobstructed access to the connection point, we think that'll solve their issues. But again, I haven't had that specific conversation.
Okay. I'm sure you'll discuss that with George.
Yeah. And it may, again, result in five extra feet of pavement here, because it'll be a striped area, but I don't think that should impact much on the site, so.
I did want to touch upon one thing. I wasn't sure until this week whether or not all of the traffic lights have been synchronized, and I found out that they have been. And that traffic on 44 is starting to really increase. So I personally think that we should look at this particular project and see how much more can 44 really take. I mean, listen, Eastdale is a great project, and there's a lot of good businesses that have gone in here. However, that's a one-way north and a one-way south. It's not Route 9. So I think that we need to look at that. I personally think that we need to look at that.
I am shocked to hear DOT tell you that they've synchronized the lights because I've been talking with DOT for the last eight months about this. They've had serious, and maybe they resolved it in the last two weeks, but they have, we spent a lot of money.
Yes.
Yeah.
In upgrading the technology out there so they could synchronize the lights. So installed these pucks in the road that were going to read the traffic, go to the intelligence system and synchronize the lights. Well, the pucks failed, so the vendor installed microwave cameras on all the lights so they could then feed the information to the state system to synchronize the lights. So they're having issues with the cameras, which they're getting fixed, but DOT has said, well, we haven't had a chance to get back out there and synchronize the lights and make sure the program is working right.
So they haven't.
That's a story that they were telling me, and I'm frustrated to tell you that because, again, there's been, it's not optimal. And again, there's been a lot of investment by, a lot of time invested, a lot of people and a lot of money invested in this. And DOT needs to do what they're supposed to do there to get them synchronized.
Yeah, they're supposed to synchronize all of it.
Not that synchronization is going to solve it, but it is just to provide as much as a 10% improvement in traffic. And that would be, I think, a big difference in this quarter.
I think you made improvements all the way out to Pleasant Valley from Adams.
Right, right. This is a tough time of year to talk about traffic on 44 because it does get jammed up particularly around Adams and feeds all the way back through. But it's not yet working the way it's supposed to, is what I've been told.
Okay, that's good to know.
All right, thank you.
Anything, Rocco?
Yeah, Jeff, I think I heard you say that the drop-off will take approximately seven minutes?
That's what their studies show. On an average, yes, you really are parking, taking your kid in, check in, and gone.
Okay. Will the pickup work the same way?
Pickup works the same. You know, I didn't get data from them on how long the pickup takes, but I don't know that it would take any longer.
No, I mean, you said you fob in and then.
You still fob in, yeah, you find where your kid is, and yeah.
Okay. And it works the same way, and the people would be parking, but yet it's staggered, whereas in the morning, it's not staggered.
I mean, it's still staggered, again, between that typical 6:30 to 9:00, 9:30 timeframe, but it's not as strung out as the afternoon pickup. Because some people do half-days, some people do a long day.
Well, I'm kind of curious about that because I have two grandchildren. It's in Charlotte. They go to both preschool, did preschool. One is currently in preschool and one is in like third grade. But the pickup is much more of a delicate thing because you have to make sure that you're giving the child the right to person, whereas you drop it off, you know you've got a safety net because it's going into the school and you've got the teachers, you have the administrators. And so the pickup is always a much more, I use the word.
I guess we don't have chips in ourselves. Yeah, right, right. Yeah, right.
I mean, you have to be, that's why, and that may fit into not only the parking, because I noticed there, because I've gone a number of times and I couldn't even go unless they had a photo of me and everything else to pick up my own grandchild there. So I was just curious how that would affect perhaps the traffic and all of the, because the parking spots, I think you've got enough for everybody there anyway.
Right. There's 41 here at, they have as many as 26 staff, but the staff flux which during the course of the day, they have more there during mealtime than they go away, so they don't have that many during the pickup and drop-off times. And I think much of this, the security and the, is really kind of security automated, so it's not dependent on a person to recognize you as Rocco, but depending on.
Right. But the accident tends to back cars up because of the length of time it takes, and everybody gets out because they're on different classrooms, and then they go out. And then I see they're going out to the back way most likely, et cetera.
It's good to.
I mean, it's just a concern.
It's a good concern, yeah.
But, Rocco, in my experience, when it's the same person picking up the child and they know who's expected.
Oh, yeah, right.
It's much faster. Right? It's probably the same seven-minute turnaround.
Well, they use a little different process down there. You had a number, and the teacher came out to check and see who you were.
I'm glad it's a national chain, I guess, because they have a model to use.
Right, I'm sure, you know. And it's not the teacher coming out, again, you're going to the place.
Well, pickup, we do go in, so that's a different thing.
I know from my grandkids, I mean, they have the same system at the school. So one side is when the kid comes running to you.
They still check you out, though.
No, they check you out. What I'm saying is not.
Right. It's just, I do know that things tend to back up a little bit, et cetera. But I was just kind of curious, because that seems like a short period of time.
Right.
For pickup.
But again, it's, right, but it's, again, it's strung out over a longer period of time, so they don't, they don't report the same issues which you're talking about, so.
As long as there's no parking for everybody to get in there, it could take a little longer, I suppose.
Right.
Actually, when the grandpa picks up, it takes longer. Because they want to try and show you the classrooms and where their friends are.
Anything else, Rocco?
No, I think that's it.
How many students, you said, 400?
So the max in this building is 144.
144.
Right. Interestingly, they say that about 25% of the children are siblings in there, so it's not as many families, but that's the max for this use.
And Joan, anything else?
No, I have no comment. I would be in favor of staff discussing with the applicant moving the exit for the lane there.
Yeah, maybe having a traffic consultant take a quick look at it to see.
And we're happy to discuss that. Our concern with moving it in the middle here, which this is where the exit from the Ambulatory Surgery is right here, would then bisect the parking lot, and we think that adds more potential for internal conflict in the parking lot as opposed to what we think is kind of a cleaner stretch here with the access road. But that's a discussion we're happy to have with the traffic consultant or with the board or whomever, but we think this is a cleaner way to do it.
The people using that exit would only be going westbound.
Right, right. Most people would only be going, you know, some people might decide to do that, but we think most people would end up going, yeah, use that to go.
Anybody going eastbound would come out.
Right. There's no wait, there's no one queuing there to make a left turn because you can't make a left turn there.
Correct.
Right, so.
Maybe that helps. It is close to the, as Eric said, close to it. Peter, anything?
This is the 25th visit. The question in my mind is, in visit number one, you had a daycare included.
Yes.
Visits two through 25, the project has gone through a lot of changes. You shifted from commercial to residential, residential to commercial and retail. And my question is, is the model that we used on visit one still applicable to visit 25 in terms of traffic generation? I mean, you've got here at least 340 trips per day minimum between the staff and the children. And I'm just wondering if that number was the number that we used in offering number one.
So I guess a couple of things if I could respond. One is, we didn't really, hasn't been a major shift from retail to residential. There've been, the biggest shift, I think, here is from within the commercial portion of it, less retail, more non-retail. So more service and medical and less retail in the commercial. But I think the ratio of commercial to residential has been fairly stagnant. But your comment about total vehicle trips is certainly spread out over the course of the day, you know, the, which is, the analysis that the traffic engineers do is based on peak hour, because that's when you have the biggest problems. The, what we supplied back to the board in the last several applications is an analysis from the Institute of Transportation Engineers data of the land uses as originally proposed compared to the land uses. Now, what's the peak traffic generation, what's been the change in peak traffic generation during, for those particular uses? And it's actually declined. As we've gotten more defined in our uses here, it's less than what the projections would have shown. Now, we didn't do a traffic analysis, but we did a demand.
Do we have that data?
We have the data as of the last time that the board went through a more detailed consistency review.
When, remember when that was?
When we had our original, well, I don't.
It's included in this application, too.
September 2020 was the last time there was, I think, a finding, a revised finding. I can't recall if there was a more, there may have been a more recent one with traffic numbers where our consultant, and at that time, the consultant gave us the demand according, as Jeff said, according to the ITE for the uses to date. I don't remember the specifics, though.
So the question is, does the ITE use for a daycare match these numbers?
Right. I mean, the size of the daycare hasn't changed from what was proposed originally, so the traffic for that is fairly consistent. What has changed is I think there were things that were proposed with drive-throughs, for example, or other things that have since gone away. And so Jeff has supplied us with the information that the traffic numbers have decreased. I don't know that Mark has taken a specific look at that, but I do know that as each application has come in, he's agreed with the representations about the traffic. But we can certainly have Mark do that.
I do recall that.
The drive-through bank went away, so that was.
Yeah, the bank went away. That was a big, that was a big traffic generator. That would make a very large difference. And I do recall that overall for the development, the original traffic consultant, who we came back and had to take a look at this up to date at that, whatever that last review was, the overall take was that the trip generation and the traffic impacts at that time were no greater and actually less than they were with the original proposal when there was a negative declaration by the board.
Okay. Do you have more current data than 2020?
Well, 2020 is when this board last adopted a change in the findings, but at every applicant... But at, at every application, the board has looked at the potential impacts and either, and, and to date has reaffirmed that, that the need changes are, are not significant. But, but in, in the last several applications, we have submitted the data specifically for the changes in uses and how that, how that compares to the original traffic data. So yes, you have it even for this application, there's an analysis in there from the, from the last time you looked at it. Or the, the, and it kind of builds each time.
Thank you, thank you, very good. My other question is, I've been meaning to ask you this, the gate, Darrell Place.
Yes.
How is, is that functioning and is it working out okay?
Um, you know, I haven't driven through there in three or four months, but I, I, I.
You haven't had any complaints?
I haven't had any, any complaints. And I think at the board's request, if somebody had a problem, they needed to be able to contact us. We did put a little sign up there, it says, if there's a problem, please call our maintenance arm and we'll take care of it.
I drove through there once when it, not long after it opened, I guess, and it was working well.
Thank you.
Pete, I'll just note for the record that Jeff did provide a traffic analysis table with this submittal with respect to the tenth addition and the eleventh addition of the I T E. And it looks like, I think it's broken out by west and east sides. And the net change in vehicle trips from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-fifth amendment was, was a negligible number for this site overall. I think, I'm not sure if I'm reading this right, but it looks like for the P M peak, there was a decline of zero point two six, uh, P M peak trips from one side and an increase of zero point three nine.
Okay, has our, our consultant reviewed that data?
No.
Would it be a good idea for him to review it?
I think, I think we were going to recommend to get our consultant to take a look at the, the exit and he can take a look at that as well.
We could have to take a look at that time.
Wouldn't hurt.
All right, anything else, Peter?
No.
My two cents says the, you know, on the sign, again, the internally lit signs, I'm not a great fan of them, but just be careful of the brightness because the LEDs these days, you know, it looks like every car on the road has their brights on. Don't want it to appear, appear overly bright, so make sure they're not using six thousand, the temperature in there or something.
Got it.
And as far as the exit, I, I would recommend that we, as a condition, that we have our traffic engineer just take a look at that exit. I mean, it may be fine because of its right turn only out, but just want to have it, have it blessed as a concern.
I move the planning board find the Eastdale Village application for the twenty-fifth amendment site plan and special use permit involve incremental changes to Eastdale Village project of negligible magnitude and scope and that are no significant and consistent with the previous secret findings adopted March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen and amended September seventeenth, twenty twenty, as modified by the proposed Eastdale Village application received November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Move to the seconded for seeker, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board grant a bold waiver for the rear yard setback from the daycare building G Norly Face on Eastdale Village Lot eight W to Eastdale Village Lot seven W adjacent to the storm water management basin to permit a proposed setback of sixteen point four feet where twenty-five is required because the reduced setback will no, will not have a significant or adverse effect on adjoining land use and neighborhood character. Because proposed Lot eight W development of daycare building G is otherwise compliant with the standards of the M H C zone in two-ten dash twenty-seven H and because in the bill, and the planning board's sole discretion said waiver would be consistent with goals and objectives of the town plan and chapter two-ten pertaining to the intent and purposes of the M H C district.
Second.
Move to the seconded, for a waiver, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero.
Move the planning board grant additional amended site plan and special use permit approval for the Eastdale Village twenty-fifth amendment site plan and special use permit application subject to the following, respond to the comments of the reviewing departments and agencies and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included of but not limited to the following, one through ten, um, in which our traffic consultant will review the Elizabeth exit, Elizabeth Lane exit.
Second.
Move to the seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, what you got for architecture?
Right, we're, right, happy to, thank you, by the way, we certainly appreciate it. It's, uh, right, architectural review. So, um, again, working with learning experience, working with our prototype. So we've looked at developing a building, particularly adding, make sure we have gabled roofs, dormers, proportional windows and doors, which has not, not been their, their, their typical look. So this is, um, it's labeled north elevation, but I think the architect was, was turned around. So this is really the, this is not, not the north elevation, south elevation, this is what you would.
They, they were all swapped the elevation, I know.
Yeah, right, so.
North, south, east and west labeled wrong.
So, but we'll get that straightened out. But again, the, uh, we've, we've contended the use of, of the hardy, hardy prod, prod products. Um, the, the, the siding is the, um, the light mist, which we've used on the, on the buildings in the site there. And the trim is the, uh, the arctic white. And the, the base, the, the water table there is the, uh, the iron gray, which is again, used throughout the site. And because the, the next building, the, the ambulatory surgery center, we used, um, the black and the gray on that one. This one needed to be a little lighter, I think, and to provide a little more contrast to that, to that building. So again, we've, we've tried to work this building to be in the context of the remainder of the site. Same shingles we've used elsewhere and again, many of the same, the same features and same, same materials that are used throughout, throughout Eastdale. Continued, uh, right, on the, on the forty-four side, we've, um, again, worked and, and one of the things that we've, we've, we've done here, again, added the gable to make this to look like, more like a, an entrance on the Route forty-four side. Um, on the site plan, this gate was centered on this elevation. We offset it thinking that, that provided a kind of a, a better look and feel related to the, to how the, the building operates and how it, how it looks architecturally. Uh, but again, it, it's a semblance of an entrance there, even though that's not an active entrance that, that you're going to use to pick up or drop off your kid. It really is a kind of a classroom door there. But again, it provides that look on Route forty-four as if it's a building entrance instead of just, um, instead of just the windows and doors there. But again, the use of the, the gables, we think, is, is consistent with the rest of, of Eastdale. The HVAC equipment is on the roof, it's screened by the, by the pitched roof and, and you can kind of see the, the, you know, this, this kind of leader here showing, you can't see the HVAC units in here, it was some trick there, they just put a line. But I think the, the HVAC units are behind the roof here on the flat section, you can't see them on either side. But this is the, this is the, the, in the back of the building with the storm water basin, um, would be in the, in the foreground. Uh, they've called the south elevation, really the north elevation. But again, that, that, that staccato of, of windows and doors, um, again, is, is intended to, to provide some, some rhythm to the site. But again, this is not, we didn't, didn't want to really kind of call attention to this building because the other side really is the front. So this has less feature on the, on the roof line there as a, as a result. And then the side on the playground, again, the same treatment, uh, except for, again, you'd had the playground and the foreground, uh, but there are two kind of covered porches here, uh, where the, I think the, the staff sits and they convene the, the, the children here on their way in and out.
One of those doors, yeah, so those doors are all used in and out for the.
They're in and out and, and, but kids also come out the, the, from the classrooms and use that sidewalk and come around the back.
Okay.
And so not all, not all, not all the traffic is through the building, much of it is also outside.
Okay, more controlled, I guess, that way?
Yes.
All right, anybody have any comments on the architecture?
Yeah, I've got a question. Uh, now, all of this, especially in the front there, the one that faces the forty-four and I guess all around to the build, and you said there'd be a four-foot fence?
Yes, there's a.
Is that a, a vinyl where you can't see through it?
This fence is the, is the four-foot iron fence, which we've used throughout the, throughout the site. Now, the only, the only privacy fence, the white vinyl fence is on the.
Is in the back?
Is on the, is on the backside, opposite side.
Okay, so basically, there'll be an iron fence four feet high. And so it, it kind of, you, you don't get a clear picture until about like halfway up the door and halfway up the windows. And, and what color would that be, black?
It's black, yeah.
And, and that's outside of the sidewalk, I see.
It's outside of the sidewalk.
Where's an example of that fence that you currently have?
Um.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
I, uh.
Around, like around the, like the green space area where the pool is in it.
Yes, that's the same fence, right. I was going to say it's around, we just put it in, installed it around the, around the, the E-one restaurant. It's around, um.
That's pretty.
Yeah, it's around, it's around the, the playground on the, on the other side.
I mean, if you go where the pool, the pool area is, the green, the green area, playground, green area, and bocce court, all that, it's all.
Yes.
All highly visible through that fence.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not a stockade or anything.
Right.
It was like a pool, it's a pool fence, that's, that's the probably longest run of it on the site, so.
Thanks. Anybody else?
No.
Comments on architecture? In case I move, we accept architecture as presented for the G. Move to the seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Any other architecture tonight?
No other architecture tonight, not, uh, not quite ready for prime time.
All right.
Right, but thank you all for your holidays.
Thanks, Jeff, have a good holiday, happy new year. See you back here soon after the show. All right, next up is Habitat for Humanity.
Uh, Jeff, you got to unshare.
Right.
Jeff?
Jeff?
Jeff? You have to unshare your screen.
Can't kick him out?
I, yeah, um, in the back room they can, but, um. Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
Name is Amy Bumneri for Habitat for Humanity.
Yep, hi Amy, how are you?
How are you? The, uh, application is for a proposed cluster subdivision for a total of six lots, five of which would be buildable. Uh, one would be a forever green open space lot.
Yep.
The residential subdivision off Sunset Avenue. We are, what's that?
No significant change since last time, or what's?
Hi, there are some technical changes. Um, I'm proposing to put the drainage to the rear of the parcel, but I, I know the big ones are finding somebody to own the open space. I'm trying to, uh, set up a meeting with the county executive to see if the county would be interested. That is adjacent to the rail trail.
Were you going to share your screen at all to show the plans or something?
Yeah.
So the public can see it. Yeah, just, uh, hiked that whole rail trail a couple of days ago. How's it looking?
So here's the rail trail.
Nice new trail.
And this parcel here, the open space parcel. And then you have the five building parcels around the cul-de-sac. And potential storm water treatment area would be here. I have to have soil testing done before I can actually size that, but there's an existing storm water treatment area which actually gets all the runoff from, most of it's from off-site from when the Sunset Avenue was connected to Fairview Extension. So it looks from the existing split that the existing storm water area is at about max capacity.
Okay. I'll have to sure enter.
Well, just take all the other reviews and bring it to the back, to the south bend.
There is, uh, I think just, and it wasn't that area, I guess. There's definitely water along the trail there, but it wasn't getting onto the trail. There was sufficient pooling.
Where is the wetland in, just back in here?
Yeah, that might be what I saw.
Actually, so that's, this is the buffer, this is the wetland, it's a very small portion of wetland on the property.
All right.
And there are, there are some natural wells through there, so I can see where runoff would be going toward the trail.
All right, thanks. Is that Eric?
Sure. So this has been before the board, once before, it's back this time, uh, also for a public hearing. Still under secret review and a preliminary major subdivision hearing for the clustered subdivision proposal. As Amy described, uh, there's before, in order for the, the, most of our comments, there's quite a few comments from planning and engineering. Um, I think the central ones have to do with the, uh, the proposal for clustering, um, and the open space. Those, the, there are some technical questions about, about numbers which need to be addressed in order to, uh, in order to define the buildable yield for the site, uh, it's, which is probably going to come out, but the numbers aren't quite there yet. Uh, and then the, which they'll probably work out. The bigger question might be the open space lot ownership. The applicant's indicated that it's, you know, they're considering options. Um, and that really needs to be resolved in order for the clustered subdivision to move ahead.
Need to find someone that wants to buy it and pay taxes, I don't think, and not do anything with it.
Uh, as far as the roadway dedication, the highway superintendent's indicated receptivity to it, uh, that, that would also need obviously to be acceptable to the town board as well. Uh, the applicant, as far as the open space, the applicant has proposed open space, uh, dedicate, uh, dedication to the town. It doesn't meet the town's criteria for recreation, recreational space dedication. Uh, there's not a need for it here. Uh, but, you know, the applicant is, is working on that proposal to find a potential recipient.
Okay. Yes, I mean, it's a great use for the site and you get some more Habitat homes, the whole cluster here is terrific. But we've got some steep slopes and other things to deal with there to, to make sure all the, everything's working out well. So, you finished then?
Uh, well, just that we would recommend that there be some offline discussion, whatever they come up with, with staff, before coming back to the board, uh, rather than, you know, come back and have more discussion, see if we can work out some feasible pathway before they.
Yeah, we don't want, trying to minimize their expenses as well for that, for this, uh, organization. Bobby?
Sure.
Speaker still in order?
Yeah, we, uh, like, I don't want to reiterate what Eric said, but we have similar concerns uh, with the open space and the yield calculations. Amy touched on the drainage, so there's a lot of technical review that's going to have to go into sorting out the drainage, especially if it's a town drainage being dedicated from the road that's going to end up infiltrating on this open space area that we don't know who's going to own. So there'll be potential easement requirements or, or something to that effect. Uh, we'd probably need to set up a meeting with the highway superintendent to go over the cul-de-sac layout. There's some specific requirements in the code, um, that if they can't meet the diameter, that, that the superintendent's allowed to make some adjustments to that as long as he's happy with it. So we'll probably have to line that up.
It's, it's fire department as well.
Right. Uh, it's a little complicated on the sewer side of things, so we're going to need an, an engineer's report either way. Um, but they're proposing a low-pressure sewer system at the, at the moment. Uh, because the site's downhill from the road.
Needs to pump up.
So it's a little more complicated, but, but doable.
Then you need backup power.
Yeah, or, or emergency storage, yeah.
Storage or whatever.
Um, so we can work that out with the health department and, and the applicant offline. Uh, as you mentioned, there, there's a lot of steep slopes, uh, there's a bit of grading going on. So we'd like to see a cut and fill analysis to see exactly how that's going to lay out with, with where they need to move materials. Uh, there is a retaining wall proposed on the north end of the site, um, that's very close to the right-of-way, um, which we prefer not to have to deal with, um, as, on the town side of things. So if, if it would be possible to reach out, Central Hudson's, the adjacent property owner, uh, to reach out to them to see if, if we could get permission, uh, through construction to do some grading onto their lot so that they can bring that slope down and, and avoid having to install the retaining wall. Uh, that would be preferable for the town. That would be preferable for the town for that.
Probably okay, the gas lines on the north side of the power lines, so that's further away.
But there's a lot of technical comments, but other than that, I think those are the big key points.
All right, thanks. This is on for hearings, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Anyone in the audience or? On the Zoom, I wish to comment on the Habitat application.
In the audience? Doesn't look like there's anybody on the Zoom.
Nobody waving their hands frantically, so there will be another opportunity. I move the planning board adjourn the hearing to February 15th, 2023.
Second.
Or 24, sorry, 2024.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Go around the board for comments. Start with John next time.
I have no comment at this time. Thank you.
Ahmad, same. Rodney, what do you think?
No comment at this time.
You probably have one.
Not really. I mean, I think that, I think we're still looking for a lot of information. I guess it will be good that the road will be dedicated to the town. That will help. I think, you know, if the county executive can buy up that open space, that'd be great for you. Otherwise, you might have to see whether or not you can devy up that space and put it on the tax rule, one house at a time. I know that's what you guys are trying to avoid, but you might have to do that.
I don't see any cuts that'd be interested.
Yeah, maybe.
Another option.
I know that, yeah. Looks like you might need a variance, right, for a setback? For the 100-foot setback?
I may, yeah, there's a, there's leniency in the cluster subdivision code, so I don't remember how that read, but-
Okay.
It requires a variance.
All right.
Or may the planning board to allow for smaller setbacks.
Okay.
Yeah, Chris, I mean, Chrissy wants to wait till she sees the cluster to-
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think we're just looking for more information until we can really answer some of these questions, so, but it looks good so far.
Peter?
Who is going to own the pump station and maintain it?
We're proposing individual pumps at each home, so whoever owns the home would own their own station, and then it would be discharging into an existing town station.
It's a low-pressure system, so each house would have its individual pump station, and there'd be a central force main in the road, so the town would own and operate the force main, but the residents would be responsible from that connection point back to the house.
Okay, so they don't need the high-pressure pump coming up?
Not, not, no, not a typical, right. It'd be individual pumps for each house with a central force main that the town would be responsible for, and then that would make its way over to an existing-
I was wondering if each house needed backup storage or backup power?
Yeah, they, 24-hour storage or emergency power is typically what the health department requirement is.
Okay, so that would've worked out.
On the subdivision plan that I have, it only denotes one proposed sewer pump station. That's why I asked the question. It's just to the, if you're looking at the subdivision plan, it's just to the right of the center of the proposed cul-de-sac.
There's one, there should be, there's one at each home site, so in the yard and-
What sheet is this?
Yeah, it's a typical symbol.
Yeah, Sheet C140.
130.
So if you skip a next page, oh, I don't, that's the utility plan.
Oh, yeah, there's a call-out to each, yeah, so C, there's no topo on it, it's the, it is C130. At each home site, there is a call-out to a pump.
Okay.
So each individual homeowner would be responsible for their own?
Up until the property line, so, you know, in that sense, it works as a typical sewer as far as maintenance goes.
And good luck with your conversation with the county executive.
Thank you.
It looks like, yeah, it looks like there's a pump station in the yard at each home site, so, all right. And my two cents is just, yeah, there is a few things to go over aside. You know, suggest you meet with staff, as Eric suggested, and offline before the next middle, make sure you try to clean up some of these issues.
Aye.
And that way we can move forward more when you come back. Save coming in and out of here a few times. All right.
I will the planning board defer action on this application as incomplete and direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, 1 through 12.
Second. Moved in seconded to defer, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, thanks, Amy. Good luck and happy holidays.
Yeah, yes, you too.
Happy new year.
You too.
Next up is 48 Springside addition.
We heard a talk about 48 Springside. We're in another small addition in the Van Wagner Place neighborhood. There's an existing office building that houses the PVE Scheffler Engineering Firm. They do environmental engineering services in the area, and they're looking to add one or two staff members, but we're accommodating a 400-square-foot footprint, 600-square-foot total addition onto the building.
Can you just bend that mic a little more to make sure, make sure you're on the record yet?
As you can see here, we zoomed in a little into the plan. The existing lot of just over an acre has multiple other buildings. We have the existing 25 Van Wagner Place office building, which houses the community foundations, the lot that has the Child Abuse Protection Center, two apartment buildings, and then the existing PVE building. You can see here the addition, and in terms of what we're going to be providing in terms of the site plan, we have a concrete walk that kind of goes around the building. As you can see here from the front view, that has the ADA access to the rear of the building, and this is where we're gonna be putting the addition. So that site work will have to move to the other side of the building to accommodate a ADA ramp, and in this area, we'll have to provide some sort of retaining wall to maintain the space required to bring that ramp out into the back and then meet this existing ADA access. And in terms of, in terms of the addition, we're really just maintaining the existing look and feel of the building. We'll be salvaging some of the windows from the existing side elevation to reinstall on here with some other windows in the back of the new additions. The materials would be similar to the existing building. We're gonna maintain the vinyl siding, have all the trim eaves match along with the standing seam metal roof.
All right. Thanks. Eric?
Sure. This, the application is type 2 for seeker, meaning no further environmental review required, so there is no lead agency circulation, just a site plan, public hearing, an architectural review, and potential compliments to Steve and John because I know Steve has often told me he was always hoping for a simple, not-too-complicated project, and I think he may have found one. The additions are pretty, it's pretty clear what the, where the additions are on the plan. There are some, there's a number of issues with regarding exact, the details on existing and proposed conditions, but I think, so I've drafted a review where the board can go either way. The remaining conditions that for information could be addressed as, either as conditions of approval or if you wanted the applicant to come back, so you could see them for yourselves. You can do that. Probably the only, most significant might be the, exactly the layout of the topography for the rear access, but even that could probably be handled as a condition of approval if the engineer's okay with it. So that's, that's, so you have resolutions either way.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Let's go to engineering.
So I echo Eric's comments. We need a little more clarity on what the exact proposed site improvements are. There's not a whole lot shown on the site plan itself. And then just coordinating the building plans with the site plan-
Correct.
With where that retaining wall's gonna be, it was a little unclear. So just, I, you know, I don't think there's any major obstacles, it's just kind of sorting all that out and seeing exactly what the proposed layout is.
Absolutely.
So you think that could be a conditional?
Yeah, I think that's fine. It looks like it's a little tight to the, is that the parking area where that guardrail is for the neighboring lot?
Correct. Yep, that's, it, the owner owns the same lot, so it is, it is a shared, a shared property, so there's some ability to work in that area.
So I think it's all manageable.
All right, thanks, Rob. It's on for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Anyone in the room or on Zoom? Can you unshare your screen now, so we can see if anybody's wanting to talk about this Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Go around the board for comments. Peter?
It's a nice improvement.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Nicole?
I really didn't have anything for this. It looks good, so.
Okay, Rocco?
Yeah, I'm fine. It looks good.
Fine. And Joan?
I have no comments.
All right, my only comment is, is there another access to the basement? It looks like there's a-
So-
You have to remove the basement access, AC condenser, furnace, air intake, hose bigot, the-
Correct, yes. There is an interior stairwell that goes downstairs. The Bilko door is really for like large, you know, there's furnace equipment or stuff that's down there. In the addition, we're gonna create, we're gonna actually maintain that Bilko door, create a floor hatch so you can still access that, that area within the building because it's, the, trying to create an exterior Bilko door to get to a basement hatch area is a little more difficult, so we're gonna create that contained within the construction.
Living the floor plan of that new office.
Correct. Yep.
Just gotta lift the rug up and-
For the, yeah, once every three years when you need to replace something down there if you can't walk it down the stairs.
Okay, good. Glad you're planning for that.
Yep.
All right, then.
Okay. I move the planning board determine that the proposal meets criteria of the seeker type 2, action pursuant to seeker part 617.5C9, requiring no further environmental review.
Second. Moved in seconded for seeker, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for 48 Springside PVE additional site plan application, such as to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness of above, but not limited to the following, 1 through 9.
Second. Moved in seconded, grant conditional, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. And can you, and do you have anything to present for architecture other than what you showed already?
I have basically the same, if you want to-
You just extended.
Blow through again, yeah, exactly. We're just maintaining the existing-
Existing design and color and everything.
Correct. Using all the same materials.
Any comments on architecture, anyone?
No.
Looks good. Blend it right in. I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, good luck. Can you tell Steve that one and done project for a change? Just tell him it's because he didn't come.
Absolutely.
Good luck with the project.
Thanks a lot. Have a great holiday.
You too.
The other, the other building, our apartment building seems to be going well there.
It is coming up. Yep, we should be telling you very about April.
All right. We have some deferrals, adjournments to do on some other projects. Anyone on the board have any comments on any of these deferrals?
No.
Seeing none, I, 48 Tucker Drive, I move we adjourn the public hearing to January 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. 68 Van Wagner Road, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to January 18th, 2024.
Second.
24 there, Eric. And then, moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Next up, extra space storage. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to January 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Metro roofing supply on Salt Point Turnpike, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to January 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Salt Point Center, I move it, adjourn the public hearing to January 18th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, at this time, I move we allow public comment on other items on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Is there anyone in the audience or in the room or on Zoom that wish to comment on remaining Seeing none, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero.
Can I ask, Carl, the IT department is ready to make the switch back over to, and then they'd like to go home, so can we take about a five-minute recess so we can make the switch on the Zoom and if anyone needs to take a quick break, five minutes and come back?
Sounds fair. You'll have to convince me.
So it's 6:50-
The bathrooms are operational.
The bathrooms are operational, yes. So it's 6:55, so we'll be getting back at around 7:00.
7 o'clock.
Yep.
Okay.